Okay, am I ready? Good evening, this formal meeting of the Board of Education for February 24th, 2014 is called to order. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. Any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. Okay, first on our agenda tonight is our classified employee appreciation. We're very pleased to acknowledge our classified employees. Classified Employees Recognition Week is March 3rd through the 7th. I believe I speak for everyone on this board when I say that classified employees' work often behind the scenes is valued by all of us. Bus drivers, food service workers, janitors, school secretaries, all of those people who help make our schools run smoothly. We really appreciate their work. So Superintendent Smith, do you have comments and a resolution, I think?
I do, and part of what we do for Classified Appreciation Week is we have ten honorees that have been nominated who represent all of our classified staff. And HR received a total of 209 nominations, nominating a total of 121 classified employees. The selection involved our union partners and department heads and was really difficult given the number of outstanding employees who were suggested as being recognized. Each honoree will receive a crystal paperweight that's inscribed with the PPS logo and the words Outstanding Achievement. In addition, each honoree will receive copies of the nominations received on their behalf and a copy of the school board resolution which I will read to you momentarily. And the gifts will be sent to each employee supervisor to present the honoree during Classified Appreciation Week. So the classified employees being honored are Leana Anashenko, who is with Ed Kelly School, is an ESL Educational Assistant; Timofey Vethilov in Facilities, who's an electrician; Susan Hall, who's at Skyline as a Principal Secretary; Deborah Howard, Student Transportation, a bus driver; Gretchen Johnson, who's with Special Education as a Senior Administrator Two; Jose Manny Mariscal, who's at Cesar Chavez as a Head Custodian; Lucy Miller at Scott School, who's a Para-educator; Erin Sherry, who's Nutrition Services Lead Food Service Assistant; Virginia Stensby, who's at Cleveland, works as a bookkeeper; and Andrea Woodward, who's at Bridle Mile as a Library Assistant. So they represent and were nominated by their colleagues and are being called out as outstanding accomplishments. The resolution that will be read into the record. "Portland Public Schools' Classified Employees Are Essential Members of Our Educational Team. They are often our ambassadors to the public as well as caring, familiar people in the lives of our students. On the front lines and behind the scenes, they create a positive learning environment for our students by assisting them in the classroom, preparing and serving meals, caring for their physical needs, transporting them, keeping them safe, and aiding their families. They keep our administrative and school offices humming, attend to our buildings and grounds, help us communicate with each other in our community, shepherd supplies and equipment and so much more. We are grateful for their support. The Board of Education for Portland Public Schools acknowledges and applauds Portland Public Schools' assistive tech practitioners, attendance monitors, book clerks, bookkeepers, bus drivers, campus monitors, clerks, community agents, CNAs, custodians, educational assistants, food service assistants, instructional tech assistants, library assistants, licensed physical therapists, certified occupational therapy assistants, maintenance workers, nutrition services, orthopedic equipment techs, occupational and physical therapists, para-educators, secretary, security techs, sign language interpreters, and transportation route schedulers. For their efforts on behalf of the 47,000 students in our Portland Public Schools, the classified employees deserve recognition and thanks. The Board of Education declares March 3rd to 7th, 2014, Classified Employee Appreciation Week in recognition of the many daily services provided to enrich and support students in Portland Public Schools toward their highest achievement possible. Thank you, thank you, thank you to all of our classified staff."[288.74][288.74][applause]
Thank you Superintendent Smith. We will now consider Resolution 4877, a resolution to recognize Classified Employee Appreciation Week, March 3rd to the 7th, 2014. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Director Regan moves and Director Morton seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 4877. Ms. Houston, is there any citizen comment?
No, there's not.
Is there any board discussion? Director Laub?
I just want to re-echo what Superintendent Smith just read, that we know how important all these folks are in student contacting, whether they serve as mentors in our buildings or always looking out for safety, getting students fed well, making sure they have the supplies they need. It's just really a great appreciation for all the work they do and how important it is that every member of our school community engage and supports our students. So I just want to say thank you again.
Thank you. Any else? Okay, thank you again. The board will now vote on Resolution 4877. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions, no. Resolution 4877 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is the superintendent's report. Superintendent Smith, you want to go ahead and give us your report?
I do, and I actually want to start just by a brief acknowledgement of both of the bargaining teams, the Portland Association of Teachers and the district bargaining teams, who after 10 months at the table last week reached a tentative agreement and averted a strike. I will just say, and all of you have been following this one all the way through, I'm really pleased to have reached the tentative agreement we reached last week. What happens at this point is Portland Association of Teachers is working with their members on communicating the details of the tentative agreement. They go through their process of ratification. It then comes to the board for the board's ratification, which will be at the meeting next Monday night. I want to just extend an incredible amount of appreciation to everybody because this required patience, it required a lot of people stepping up to say, here's how we will participate in supporting our students if in fact we had gone to a strike and you had just the entire community coming together and really, the entire community feeling a sigh of relief when in fact we reached that tentative agreement. So thank you to everyone, students, teachers, community partners, everybody who has been part of just seeing this one through. And I feel really pleased just that what was worked out at the table to reach this tentative agreement. We also have tonight our representatives from our high school constitution teams with us, and we had an outstanding showing at the State We the People competition last month. We actually recognized this at an earlier board meeting, but we wanted some of our constitution team members here tonight so we could recognize you in person. Portland Public Schools team swept the state competition, winning the top three awards. So Lincoln's team took first place, Grant finished second, and Franklin won third place. And this year Madison, it was the first year Madison had a constitution team and they received an Outstanding Performance Award for Unit 6. So they had a great showing and are off to a good start. I'd like to ask the teams to stand up as I call your names. So Lincoln's team, which is coached by Tim Swineheart, please stand and let us recognize you.[519.74][519.74][applause] So Lincoln will be representing the state of Oregon at the National We the People Competition in Washington DC in April. I have enjoyed getting to greet the teams as they come back from the airport from the national competitions and it's totally exciting, so we just think we'll all be with you when you're there representing us. And congratulations, we wish you luck in DC. Grant's team is being represented tonight by Andrew Davidson. Their coach is Jeremy Reinhold. And last year Grant won the national and state competition, national championship, so Andrew.[566.82][566.82][applause] And Franklin, is Franklin's team here? So Franklin was coached by Portia Hall. Franklin took third place this year, and in 2010 Franklin's team went to the state competition and in 2012 the team won the district competition. And do we have anyone here from Madison, representing Madison's team? So once again Madison had a new team this year and won the Outstanding Performance Award for Unit 6 and its coach is Amanda Alonso. So we'll just send our vibes over to Madison and say, woo-hoo.[619.54][619.54][applause] So Portland has won more national titles than any other city and all of those wins have been by Portland Public Schools, high schools. Lincoln is only one of four schools in the country to win the national title four times. If you win in April, you will break the national record. So we will all be rooting for you Lincoln, like woo-hoo.[645.46][645.46][applause] And actually I want to do a special call out to Marilyn Cover and the Classroom Law Project because this is part of what has been the fuel for this here in Oregon, I think, and why we have such an outstanding showing. And the coaches who have been committed to this for years. So our coaches that come back year after year and coach our constitution teams and I know, because I watch how much you all appreciate those coaches when you pour your love back into them and they watch them watch you perform. So anyway, congratulations to all of you and thank you for being with us here tonight. We also have a lot of student athletes who've been working hard during the winter sports season. I wanted to recognize the devotion of all of our student athletes, but specifically a shout out to the Wilson Cheerleaders who won another state championship and the Wilson Boy Swim Team and Franklin Girl Swim Team, both of which won regionals. We also had several students do really well in the US Junior Olympics fencing competition here in Portland. So, and we've got a little call out to all of our athletes back there too.[721.02][721.02][applause] Actually while we've got the tech men back there, I want to congratulate Benson High School on its 94th Annual Tech Show. And once again students showcased their videos, photography, and web design and student-made tools, the KPBS radio station, the Cobra car that they showcase, and again the chair with the ejector seat. So Benson's Tech Show, once again, this is a huge hit for the whole community and nicely represented here tonight.[760.74][760.74][applause]
Say "Benson Sports!"
Say "Benson Sports!"
You guys are being really well behaved for doing your demo, thank you very much. The final thing I wanted to just call out is the school choice lottery for high schools finished up Friday and will wrap up on March 7th for elementary, middle, and K-8 schools. This year, following through on a pledge that we made during the Jefferson Enrollment Balancing Process last year, we put a special focus on marketing schools in the Jeff Cluster and our community coordinator, Richard Gilliam, partnered with principals, teachers, parent groups, businesses, and community partners in the Jefferson Cluster to get the word out about our schools. So these are a few of the materials that went out. And before I lose the constitution teams, we wanted to have a photograph of students up here with board members if I can get you to come on up in the front and we'd like a picture of ourselves with you all. Our celebrities here tonight.
Jason Trombley.
Terry and Larry, one, two, three, four.
Alright, everybody ready?
Oh yeah.
Alright, big smile.
One, two, three, go.
Alright, stay right there.
How are you? Good to see you. I'm doing good, how are you doing? I know. Thank you, good to see you.
That's the way it is. Constitution team, we have a jacket left up on a front seat. Front row. Okay. Is that it? Superintendent Smith, are you?
I'm done.
Are you at the end?
Yeah, I'm done.
Thank you very much. At this time we'll go ahead and take student testimony. Ms. Houston, are there any students signed up for student testimony?
Yes, we have three. Our first two speakers, Chiven Prakash and Lupe Urbano.
Okay, while our speakers are coming forward, I'll go ahead and read the instructions for public comment. "Thank you very much for taking the time to come to our board meeting. We deeply value public input and we look forward to hearing your thoughts and reflections and concerns. Our responsibility as a board lies in actively listening and reflecting on the thoughts and opinions of others. Guidelines for public input emphasize respect and consideration when referring to board members, staff, and other presenters. The board will not respond to any comments or questions at this time, but the board or staff will follow up with various issues that are raised. Please make sure that you've left your contact information, either phone number or email, on the signup sheet. Pursuant to board policy, speakers may offer objective criticism of district operations and programs, but the board will not hear complaints concerning individual district personnel. Any complaints about specific employees should be directed to the superintendent's office and are not appropriate in this forum. If you have a total of three minutes to share your comments, please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes of testimony, a green light will appear right there in front of you. When you have one minute remaining, a yellow light will go on. And when their time is up, a red light will go on and a buzzer will sound. And we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. We sincerely appreciate your input and thank you very much for your cooperation. Go ahead."
My name's Chetin Prakash, last name is spelled P-R-A-K-A-S-H.
Can I get you to get just a little closer? I don't think it's picking you up.
My name's Chetin, my last name is Chetin Prakash, P-R-A-K-A-S-H. And I'm here to basically tell my experience and my testimony of playing four years of soccer. And my experience with high school has been really good because what sports has given me is an outlet of everything that goes on, either that's at house, at home, in school, whatever. And I think that so far I've played four years of soccer and two years of football. And football and soccer are like totally different, but the fact that if I go to a team and you're accepted by everyone on that team as a friend, as a family, makes a big difference in everyone's life. And you know, walking down the hallways in Benson or any other school as a player who plays any sport, I think you're known because you make a difference in the player that's beside you or a person that's supporting your team, no matter what, even if that's a win, loss, tie, whatever. And it's the same for any other sport, either if it's basketball, wrestling, softball, baseball, whatever. I think that sports gives every kid a way to express themselves outside of their classes. And I think if there's anything, if sports gets taken away from me as a player or anybody, I think it would be a big change because my whole school has been based around soccer and I play soccer offseason, during season, whatever. But the moment that I don't have that, I would be a totally different person because I wouldn't have an outlet or a way to get away from my problems and I wouldn't be able to make as many friends because as freshman year started, you get to make friends and you don't know anyone. But as you play a sport, I think it gives you a way to make other friends. And if that gets taken away, I think a lot of people would have very less friends and they would not be able to be what they are. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lupe Urbano and U-R-B-A-N-O. And I wrote a little something, so I'd like to share it with you guys. Okay. High school students benefit from playing sports because it motivates us to perform well in school, encourages us to be important in life, in life skills, provides scholarship opportunities. Participating in sports helps us as students to increase our grades and attendance. These programs allow us as students to interact together to a common goal, and that is to win and excel physically. It brings out the competitive side of students. What school are we from?
Benson!
Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much, both of you.[1264.14][1264.14][applause] And lastly, we have Jocelyn Batista. Is Jocelyn here?
Yep.
There we go.
Hi.
You can go ahead anytime.
Okay. My name is Jocelyn Batista. And sports to me has been a great help. I didn't play freshman year, but I regret it so much. Soccer and basketball have been a big part of my life since I was little. And taking it away, I guess you could say I would be lost because it helped me make so many friends. A coach that's so great and has helped me so much. And I think with me and everybody else, almost everybody else in the school, they don't only make a team or they're not only part of a team, they're part of a family. And taking away sports, you're not only taking away something that we do every day after school, you're taking away a home that, it's more like a place where we go and have fun, make friends, and it keeps us out of trouble in a way. And it just wouldn't be fair. I think everybody can agree with me that Benson sports are great, whether it's soccer, basketball, baseball, softball, wrestling. It's just, it wouldn't be a good idea to take it away. I think everybody is at least a part of some sport, has tried a sport and has loved it. I know I'm still thinking about joining other teams. And I'm really looking forward to next year, to playing with my team, with my girls, and just being out there, having something to do that helps me physically and mentally. And it's a way to relieve stress and takes our mind off of things just for a little bit. It's just great.
Great, thank you very much.[1424.74][1424.74][applause] Okay, at this time we'll hear from Student Representative Davidson for his report.
Yeah, real quickly, I would like to acknowledge all the students who are here tonight. I really appreciate you coming and us getting to hear your story. I think it's a really important one and I look forward to seeing how things turn out. I definitely support what you're trying to do, so thank you.[1456.22][1456.22][applause] Superintendent Smith and fellow board members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to address you all tonight. Over the past months, you have received formal and informal pleas from me to keep a strike from taking place in Portland. I know that you've been waiting a long time for this, so I am pleased to say that by a razor-thin margin, I can finally thank the bargaining teams and leadership of PAT and PPS for successfully coming to a tentative agreement before a strike occurred. Nationally, similar situations have plagued school districts. Thankfully, we did not succumb to the same fate as other districts such as Chicago and Medford. The last few days before the tentative agreement was reached, I kept thinking back to the bargaining sessions I was able to attend over the summer. I was reminded of the mantra, "We are not Chicago," which was repeated many times. Last week, we once again reminded ourselves, our community, and all those who were watching that we are not Chicago or Medford. We are Portland, we can and we will do better. Drastic alterations within PPS will be crucial to this city's success in the future. As far as I know, none of you joined this board because you were satisfied with the status quo. However, despite our efforts, our students are increasingly expected to do more with less. During the negotiations, I heard teachers say that although they were seeing increases in pay this contract, they had taken decreases in pay over the past years, meaning that they were still being compensated far less than they should have been. Students have been facing a similar dilemma. For too long, we've acquiesced to the decisions made by others which have condemned our students to have fewer opportunities for success. While we received more money this biennium from the state legislature, we are still drastically underfunded. Our schools are not able to run at optimal levels and the students who make up public schools, largely middle and lower-class populations, are being oppressed. This labor negotiation, which nearly tore our community apart, should serve as a wake-up call for internal change as well as external change. We must stop fighting amongst ourselves and actively seek the funding that we so desperately need. Obtaining and retaining the best educators in every classroom is critical to educational success. My entire time on the board, we have discussed the need for the best learning environments in every one of our soon-to-be-modernized schools. What good is having the best learning environment if we can't have the best teachers there as well? We need a contract that is competitive, that draws the best and brightest into Portland, pays enough to ensure those teachers are not spending an hour traveling by bus to get to work and addresses workloads so that those teachers are able to do their job well and so that student and teacher relationships, a critical aspect of the educational experience, can be strengthened. A stronger and more successful PPS will mean a level of economic, civic, and communal prosperity that has never been seen in Portland. But as much as many politicians and lobbyists would like us to believe, that is not possible with our current levels of funding. The investment must be made and be carefully managed. We cannot afford the golden parachutes and short-sighted, albeit reckless, decisions that have occurred in our past. Although work slowed drastically during the last month, Super SAC has kept working to make sure the last half of the school year is even more successful than the first. On March 13th at Madison High School, Super SAC will be hosting a community conversation around standardized testing and we hope as many people as possible can attend. Additionally, in less than a month, I and two of my fellow members of Super SAC will be traveling to Washington DC to attend the National Conference for the Council of the Great City Schools, accompanied by PPS staff members and Director Knowles. This year, rather than having others speak up for us, we decided to go raise our concerns ourselves. While in DC, we look forward to lobbying on behalf of the need for a larger education budget, a more critical look at standardized testing and its applications, as well as emphasizing the importance of prioritizing education. I would like to thank Superintendent Smith for giving us this opportunity to attend and represent the students of Portland at a national level. We will also be the first students to ever attend the Council of the Great City Schools and I look forward to the opportunity to provide fresh insight and continue to prioritize student voice in education. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak and on behalf of the students of Portland, thank you for serving on this board.[1725.54][1725.54][applause]
Thank you very much, Andrew. It's always a pleasure to hear what you're thinking and we are also happy that you were able to provide such a positive report about negotiations. So looking forward to working with you the rest of the year. At this time, we will move into public comment. Ms. Houston, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
We do, we have six. And our first two speakers are Debbie Kitchen and Greg Burill.
And I'm thinking that everybody who's going to be coming up for public comment heard the instructions earlier, so I won't repeat those now. Welcome. You can go ahead.
All right. Today, unlike all the other times that I've addressed you, I don't have any prepared remarks. My name is Greg Burill, B-U-R-R-I-L-L. And the reason I don't have prepared comments is that I need to s- And the reason I don't have prepared comments is that I need to speak from the heart at this important time. First of all, I think that you understand that I've worked really hard to earn your respect over the last year or two in the comments, the way I think about the future of education in the United States. And the, the thing is that this is a moment for forgiveness, okay? Student representative Davidson, I, I really appreciate some of the things that you said on that level. We have to do a better job of working. The only way we can ever have good education is if parents and students and teachers and administrators work together. And I am addressing the tip of the iceberg, right? You are the people who have the power to go and seek funds for us, to seek legislation for us, but the thing you don't have the power to do is see into thousands of classrooms and see who actually walks in and to see what teachers have to deal with on a daily basis. It makes no sense to have policies created at, behind closed doors by people who don't teach students. Tomorrow, I'll be teaching at Metropolitan Learning Center. Today, I was at George. I can't think of policies that work for both of those schools, and I can't think of the sort of mandate that would, would make teachers in both schools perform. I'm beginning to see the effects of punishing teachers. This is my ninth year, actually, I'm almost done nine years. I'm beginning to start my tenth year as a substitute teacher. And there are some schools that I've had great days in the past, and this year, I'm not having great days at those schools. I don't know, you know, it, it's the same teachers for the most part, so I don't know what's going on, budget cuts, so on and so forth. But I just, let me just get back as I, as I end my remarks to this idea of forgiveness. I, I think that the teachers and the community stood up and got such a great response that I think you're going to have to let us lead. I think you're going to have to let us manage the implementation of Common Core, because the adminisphere can't get it, right? It's, it's something that has to happen between teachers and, and onsite school district administrators. So I hope you'll consider this, and I'll be back to talk to you in future weeks about the plan that I'm trying to get teachers and administrators behind. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next two speakers are Katie Meyer and Teresa Rayford.
What school are you from? Benson!
Shall I start? Go ahead, yes, go ahead. Thank you, members of the board and superintendent Smith, for allowing me to speak about the Benson varsity football program. There's a recommendation that Benson give up, or as they're calling it, rebuild varsity football. This is really the first step on a slippery slope that could easily end the football program, and with the eventual result eliminating all sports at Benson. No one goes to school to play JV, except maybe as a recreational pastime. Students want a varsity football team to strive towards and to cheer for at pep rallies. This is part of a complete high school experience. It is as important to them as their academic path, some, some even more. And that's because it is so profoundly important in our culture, beyond all reason, you might say, but that's the fact. And as you all concluded during the high school redesign, evidence-based best practices dictate that delivery of career technical education must be contained within a well-rounded academic and extracurricular learning environment. Benson's consistent plates at or near the top of the graduation rates confirms this research. Therefore, please disregard this uninformed argument that since Benson students choose a CTE path, they also choose to give up everything else. That's, that's a flawed notion that does not support best practices. In addition, Benson's students already give up plenty, the longest car rides, they got to get up earlier than everyone else. They don't, they don't have French, drama, band, IB. They're not traveling to Washington, D.C. on the Constitution team, and they're, they're not getting a host of other cool electives and extracurricular activities. And you know what? They willingly give that up, because they've got their cool CTE electives that fit them better. However, to extend this argument to include sports, it's unfair and inequitable. Benson has already given up sports and lower-level programs because of the cap on enrollment, but no school or student body should have to be give up, give up varsity football. Not only does the decision to cut varsity football fail to support district achievement goals, it also does not survive a look through the equity lens. Eliminating an integral part of school's spirit and connection is an additional barrier to school engagement for these students who already have less. Benson is a school with sixty-four percent free and reduced lunch, fifty-six percent minority population. Equity requires that Benson students have the opportunities they will not be able to afford outside of public education. Thank you so much for listening. It's great. Girls are great.
And lastly, we have Scott Overton.
Good evening. My name is Overton Scott, O V E R T O N. Good evening, co-chairs Knowles, Bilal, board members, and superintendent Smith. We, the regional PTA, wanted to publicly thank you for supporting the process that resulted in a tentative settlement with the PAT in averting a strike. As we have testified in the past, a strike is a no-win situation for our students and families. Hopefully, the teacher members will ratify the contract, as will the board, and we can move on to the major task of educating our children and youth in Portland. We, as PTA advocates for children and youth, would be remiss if we did not point out that one of the major issues debated during this negotiation process was not a typical contract issue, but that of class size. The growing uproar of our community over many issues that impact teaching and learning in the classroom, for example, class size, teacher preparation for mandates like Common Core, time students are in school, administrator quality, configuration and size of schools, just to name a few, that points toward a need to have an open and public discussion about these issues and many more that I will group together in the name of educational vision. Class size is so much more than the number of teachers hired, since we have school buildings that cannot hold any more teachers, and merely have a teaching presence does not mean that a teacher is prepared and able to ensure academic achievement for all of their students. But it is a start, and it opens the discussion for what is ideal class size, school configuration, and teacher preparation. Many of these issues, which await attention by PPS and all teachers and staff, are not the substance of the contract. They are issues that provide the support teachers need, build the leadership we need in every school building and throughout the district to give support, build strength, and create the success for students in every school. We have seen the uneven way leadership is developed and supported in principals, in teacher leaders, and even in the way PPS connects with parents. We have great examples of how it can work. We know how to get moving, and that is what we need to do now. Imagine how smoothly these contract negotiations might have gone had the district had the professional and the professional educators, students, and families of students, and the wider community already discussed what an ideal class size should be and what the obstacles the district faces in achieving that goal. You, as the PPS school board, have set goals for this year, the first of which is, I quote, "Portland Public Schools has a clear vision that is supported by genuine ownership of the board, the superintendent, and community." To that end, the regional PTA leaders ask that you ask, task the superintendent and her staff to begin this community-wide discussion about educational vision, so that we will be prepared for future debates and demands upon the limited resources available. Mandated full-day kindergarten, increased physical education, instruction time issues are staring us down in the near future, and there are sure to be other pressures on the decisions the board will need to make and prioritize in the coming few years. We have too long postponed our difficult discussions, and the board has had to act unilaterally with just the superintendent's recommendation on matters that concern the entire community. It is our goal to have a community-wide public debate about our priorities in providing effective teaching and learning in the classrooms of Portland Public Schools that will help to inform the board and be able to lead us forward into a clear vision that is supported by genuine ownership of the community. Thank you for your continued hard work on behalf of the children and youth of our city, and know that we stand to advocate for those children and youth in all that you do. The PTA regional leadership and units stand ready and willing to gladly help coordinate public meetings, engage all our members in this discussion, and assist the process in any possible way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you to everyone for your comments. Please feel free to connect with our board clerk, Karen Houston, if you haven't left your contact information. Next, we have a report from our bond accountability committee. I'm pleased to be the board liaison for the bond accountability committee and am very thankful for the experience they bring in reviewing our work on the bond projects. We are pleased that they are here this evening to share with the board and the community their review of the work to date. Also want to, although she's not here right now, welcome the new, your new member, Carol Twee, Cheryl Tweedy. Very excited to have someone else join the committee. Superintendent Smith, would you like to introduce this item? Kevin Spellman, who will, will give the report.
Thank you. Co-chair Knowles, co-chair Bilal, members of the board, superintendent Smith. With me today, I have one of our committee members, Willie Paul. His background is really on point for this committee. He is responsible for capital operations of Kaiser Permanente in the Northwest. And Willie also served on the Long Range Facilities Advisory Committee, so he's got background in how we got to this point. I think we emptied the room for you, too. The committee met January fifteenth at Franklin High School, and we received update reports. The summer 2013 work was finally complete, and staff reported that that came in almost a million dollars under budget. The report that OSM has for you today has that updated, actually, and it's more like, I think it's a million, one hundred thousand now, so it's eight and a half percent under budget, which is really impressive. The design status of Roosevelt and Franklin was discussed, as well as Fabian, and the status of the twelve schools for summer 2014, and those are on schedule for bidding this spring. As you know, you have approved the high school ed specs, you've approved the master plans for Roosevelt and Franklin, and you have approved the pre-construction services contracts for the construction manager general contractors. So things are really moving down the road pretty fast here. We heard also from the financial folks that the auditors gave at least the first year of the bond a clean bill of health, and your performance auditor talked to us about the work scope and how we intend to work together with them. The money issues we touched on, we talked about, again, the fourteen million dollar, almost fourteen million dollar bond premium that was achieved on the first bond sale, and the committee agrees with the staff position that this should remain in reserve at this point, so that has not been allocated to any of the facilities. Staff has also responded to our previous request about more transparency on the schedules, the project schedules, because those had been not deliberately opaque, but, and it's very hard to get this kind of information across on so many projects in a short period of time with the committee. But they've done a nice job of highlighting the key areas, and I think we'll be able to track that a lot better going forth. I think by far the biggest concern, and we're not really raising, you know, a real red flag at this point, but we are concerned about budget, schedule, and scope on the Roosevelt and Franklin schools. We don't have any evidence that there's a problem in any of those areas, but we are concerned that we haven't really been following best practices to date. The, the original plan was to go through the ed spec process, complete that, start master planning, complete that, and start schematic design, now, which is where we are right now. But a lot of this happened kind of concurrently, and even as recently as Saturday, the Roosevelt, several of you were there, the Roosevelt gathering, we're still kind of, at least to some extent, talking about program, and we need to get our professionals, we need to tell them what we want and let them go implement the program. And so we're concerned about future delays related to these, these issues. They're certainly legitimate issues, there's no question about it, but every time there is a delay or compression, it increases risk to the program, and we see ourselves as, that's our role to identify that. Starting with the 2014 work, this summer, the district will work with the city on workforce training and hiring with a goal of twenty percent apprenticeship, and that's, that's a well-established program, and we're pretty confident that that will be able to be achieved. So we're happy about that. The participation of minority women-owned emerging small businesses is still below the aspirational goal, and just like we did this time last year, we want to caution that our expectation for the bid work this summer is, is that we will not, again, make that goal, is the nature of the legality is related to the bid work. But we're happy that you now have two CMGCs on board, and there's a lot more flexibility on the high school work, so we're looking forward to that. We talked to the, to staff and about student participation metrics, which all show up green on the balance scorecard, and that's frankly, in, in our view, that's because the metric is wrong. It's not a measure of real student participation, and I think staff is going to be working on, on changing that metric so we can really manage it. Willie, what did I miss?
Not much, Kevin. I, I think what you've done is provided a very accurate representation of the, of the committee's overview of the process so far. I, I merely want to reemphasize, one of the things that Kevin pointed out is that there are no silver bullets in this process, there are no shortcuts. When it comes to scope, schedule, and budget, those three cannot be separated. They all have an impact on one another. And as professionals, when we see an issue arise in any one of those three categories, it's our obligation to you to at least inform you and make that process transparent if we, if we believe there are risks. And we believe there are at this point, but as Kevin mentioned, nothing to the point where we would signal a red flag of serious concern, merely a recognition that, yes, there's a risk when schedule is compressed and when phases are extended with the expectation that somehow the time will be made up in future phases, that it, it rarely occurs that way. So our, our point tonight is to identify that generally we believe that things are going very well in the process, but right now, we see a risk in, in schedule with the compression that's taken place to date.
And we're certainly open to questions.
Questions from the board?
How, so we're one million under budget on, for the 2013 route, which is awesome. What, two questions. What, can you pinpoint why the success, so that we might want to replicate that if possible? And second, does under, a million dollars under budget mean the whole budget including contingencies, or is that before we get to contingencies?
No, that, that's taking into account contingency. So if I, if I remember right, and I'm not sure I am right, I think there was twelve percent or twelve percent contingency on those, on that work.
I thought it was fifteen, but I...
Well, I know it was fifteen earlier on, but that may have, but, so we didn't spend eight and a half percent of that. and a half percent of that.
Okay.
And what did we do right? I think the bidding environment was positive. It may be less positive this year, I don't know. I think the economy is a little more robust. Unforeseen conditions, I think they had to be managed really well to only spend kind of half of that contingency. I think that's probably a big part of the management of those projects. And they did do a lessons learned exercise after they, after they closed out the project, so I think the staff has made a good effort to take the lessons and take them forward.
As Kevin indicates, the bidding environment has been, for several years now, been favorable to owners, not so favorable to general contractors. But also with this type of work, with roofing work like is being identified here with the savings, oftentimes you get into unforeseen conditions, and I would have expected that with 12 to 15% contingency, that should have covered any unforeseen conditions. And I think it was just a matter of not running into some of those conditions that you might anticipate as you tear roofs apart, not knowing exactly what extent of damage you'll find underneath. So it's a combination of perhaps good scoping ahead of time and a positive bidding environment.
And my other last question is just curiosity from how you guys view your, your job in terms of, of the process. How deep have you delved into, you've talked about the three areas, the actual budget? And in terms of what, of what we're budgeting to get these projects done, the amount of money in, you know, there's essentially three different contingency funds, the amount of money that goes to hard costs versus soft costs? Curious to know if you've taken a deep dive into that, and we have the benefit of your experience on that.
I think it's fair to say that there hasn't been anything to dive too deeply into, because the budgets have been very conceptual to this point. And by, by the nature of the situation, because no one knew what we were building, and still do to some large extent. I think the exciting time is going to be starting here in about the next months or so, as the schematic designs on Franklin and Roosevelt are fleshed out a little bit. The role of the CMGCs at this point is to start putting some more reliable numbers to, to the designs, as opposed to, we're going to modernize a high school. There's a little more. So there will be some, something more tangible if the committee feels like it needs to dive into that. I would want to, and Willie, you can tell me, I think your experience is probably the same, no one should be surprised if some of these early estimates come in over budget. That's, to some extent, that's the nature of this process, and that's why we had the CMGCs on board at this early stage. And there'll be this kind of balancing act and tension between designers and contractors to reconcile everything. So this is, this is the exciting time to be looking at real budgets and real schedules.
And correct. We haven't taken that deep dive into the, into the estimates and the budgets, I should, I should say. And to my earlier point, budget, scope, and schedule are inseparable. So to this point, they have just been budgeted with very high-level conceptual scope, and to that extent, that's as far as we've been able to go in an evaluation of budgets, to make sure that they look and feel correct in terms of how the budget categories are identified, what percentage of numbers are carried for hardness, soft costs, what percentage is being carried for contingency. And right now, they look and feel appropriate. But as Kevin says, as we get deeper into the, into the work, it would be my expectation that we would also get a deeper view into those budgets as well.
Thank you.
So I had one specific question on your report, which is kind of a follow-up to Director Kohler, and then I had two other questions. The specific question in terms of the follow-up is that Director Kohler mentioned that we saved a million dollars on the summer's work, which is amazing, so we've had that discussion. It also looks like we had about a million dollar overrun in what's called bond oversight costs. So can you also talk to us about that, or what caused it, or whether or not you feel like we've got that under control?
Well, there's a difference between those two numbers, and I think it looks like they're kind of the same numbers. The savings on summer 13 work has occurred.
Has it what?
Has occurred. We've achieved those savings. The projected overrun on bond oversight cost is a projection, and we've spent very little, relatively speaking, of those amounts. So that's a projection by staff, and it looks, again, I just saw the updated budget that you've seen today, and it doesn't go into the kind of detail that we've seen, but it looks like that projection has been reduced somewhat even in the last month. So we know staff is looking at this and trying to determine what they can do about it.
Okay. So it's not a point of huge concern for you at this point?
Not at this point, but it's, it's on our checklist, we'll be watching.
Okay. So I have two broader questions, if people want to talk specifically about the report first, or somebody else? Or should I go? Okay. So as the Bond Oversight Committee, I had two broad questions about how we're doing so far. Clearly, our goal was to build 21st century schools, sustainable, educationally appropriate. So in our summer work last year on all of our roofs, we did not do anything like solar or renewable on those roofs, and I know that there was a lot of partnership work that was taking place a few months ago to see if that could happen on the roofs going forward. So my first question is, do you have any update on where we're at with all of that? Because obviously, if we can save a lot of money on electrical costs over the years, that's more money we can put into the classroom, so can you help me?
Sure. We touched on it relatively briefly at the committee meeting, but the, the report essentially said that a partnership is underway with PGE, and that PGE is working on a plan to address the, there was a solar study done of those facilities in the last six months or so. And so I think the ball is, is in PGE's hands, although OSM may have an update on that, I don't, I don't know.
So Superintendent Smith, I'd love to get an update on that, if we could, as we go.
And you're going to have that team up here next, so continue for questions.
Okay.
We're really putting them on the spot.
Should I wait on my other question for the next team, then, or it's a similar kind of question?
Go ahead, put it out there.
Okay. I will. Go ahead and put it out there. Kevin, I know that you were at the Roosevelt Design Team Meeting this weekend. We probably had 12 or 15 community members and a lot of other folks there. And the specific focus was on career technical education. And the space for career technical education, and Director Kohler, Director Buell and Director Kohler were there, as well as myself, so that was, it was great to hear the discussion. The groups broke up into like five different subgroups, and certainly the largest one was specific to career technical education at Roosevelt. And the discussion that keeps coming up over and over again is this allocation of 6,000 square feet for career technical education. And every time in the design advisory meetings that it comes up, what we're told is, that's what we have to work with. I mean, that's what the architects say over and over again, that's what we have to work with. And when we say, who's giving you those instructions, it seems to be from somewhere higher up. It certainly, to my knowledge, is not the Board who has made that decision. I don't know, Carol, if it's you that's made the decision, but as you look at any of our documentation, if you look at Franklin, it is more than twice as much career technical education space. And in fact, when you add some of the softer career technical education spaces at Franklin, it's closer to 25,000 square feet. You look at Roosevelt's, it's six to nine, six for specific maker space and nine broader. So there seems to be a huge inequity there, and I think the community is struggling to understand that, I'm meaning at least the folks at the Roosevelt Design Team Meeting. So in that CTE subgroup, a question was asked of the entire group, do you believe that 6,000 square feet is enough space? And there was no one who felt it was enough space. There was also a discussion, on a side discussion, about whether the CTE space and the STEM labs should be located adjacent, with some adjacencies. There was no one who believed that they shouldn't. About half the group thought there should be adjacencies, about the half group didn't really know. So there was a lot of still discussion, and I think it's one of your concerns as you sit here today, is that we still don't seem to be there.
Right.
And at some point, we're going to get caught up in a timeline and have some trouble. So I guess I'm specifically asking you, Carol, to step into this conversation in a really meaningful way and help us figure out what is the appropriate amount of career technical education space going forward if we're building 21st century schools? Because right now, the question is out there, it's been out there for months, and nobody's answering it. So why are we building Franklin with way more than twice as much CTE space as Roosevelt? So again, it could be for the next person, but that is the problem in terms of the timing that I think you're telling us to be careful about.
Absolutely. I think, you know, the, the real fear I have is that in six or seven weeks, the Roosevelt schematic design is going to come before this board. And the last thing we want is for that to be rejected.
Right. And I think you at least have some Board members here who would vote now at this point.
I hear that.
So, and I will just say, when, back when we did that ed specs conversation, and you were looking both at how Franklin had handled the conversation, and then how Roosevelt had with the direction they believed they'd gotten, and part of your conversation was believing the 6,000 square feet was a minimum, but that Franklin had wrestled with it and done something more with it, that we were hoping to then say, okay. And I, it does not surprise me that we're having this kind of conversation on the first high schools, that you had ed specs that were in, in theory, that as it's getting more real, people are attaching more specifics to the conversation. But I think the conversation Franklin had, we wanted to cross-fertilize Roosevelt's conversation, to say, okay, this is a minimum, it's not saying you will only have 6,000 square feet, this is a minimum, here are all the other features that we're considering to be CTE, what are we, what are we calling CTE, what are we calling STEM? I mean, you ended up with a pretty robust conversation amongst yourselves about what you meant by this in passing of the ed specs document. And I think at this point, the conversation between Franklin's Design Advisory Group and Roosevelt's Design Advisory Group to say, okay, how do you cross-fertilize those conversations for exactly the stage of design they're at is productive. But you guys just did this conversation as a board in terms of your sense-making and what you understood at this point, and what we were learning from Franklin's Design Advisory Group as they were grappling with it, and then how do, how do we want to feed that back as an instruction to Roosevelt, that it was not saying you're limited to the 6,000, you could go beyond that, but you, as a design advisory group, have to look at the trade-offs involved? So I don't, anyway.
Just so you know, at every single design team meeting, the question has come up about where does the 6,000 square feet come from? And at every single meeting, the group has been told, this is what you have to work with, at every single meeting, just so you know.
Director Reagan, I have a feeling, I know the source of that, and I think it's a symptom of this, this concurrency that's been going on, because I think that design team was working with draft ed specs. And the draft ed specs had 6,000 square feet, it hadn't come before this board, but that's what it had. And my guess, and that is really only a guess, but it seems to make sense to me, that this is one of the symptoms of, of this concurrency instead of a linear relationship.
I agree. Thank you.
Any questions? Director Buell?
I want to second what Director Reagan said about 10,000 or more square feet, which should be out there. What she's talked about has been my exact same understanding. I'm not an accountant, though I know enough not to spend more money than I make, but I'm also not an architect, and I'm not a contractor, but I am, I did spend 40, over 40 years as a school teacher. And so I kind of come out and look at these ed specs from a school teacher angle, and I'm sitting in that meeting going, this doesn't make sense from a school teacher. For instance, the auxiliary gym doesn't have any seating in it. Were you going to build an auxiliary gym that's going to be out there for 50, 60 years and no seating at all in it? Where does, do you seat your class? Where do you have, how do you play a JV game and a freshman game at the same time with no seating in it? That means you have to get those kids out of school an extra hour and a half or two hours early who are playing basketball. How do you bring in and play some of the community activities with no seating in it? This is the place where they, they spent, they raised four million dollars to redo the football field, one we're not maintaining very good, by the way. It's pretty bad, I don't know, hopefully we could do something about that. But, so, I'm just going, this doesn't make any sense. And then also talking to the people in the, in, in writing, kind of, small CTE, the writing workshop, and the publishing, and so forth. Well, when I looked at that, they've got you doing stuff in the big space that you don't do in a big space with all the noise. I mean, and so I, and there was a teacher at the table where I was, and I asked, how have we included teachers into this? And she said, well, not much. And so here's all these actual educational things that have a huge effect, and I'm being told by the Roosevelt teacher, who's pretty, seemed like a pretty nice woman, hey, no, we haven't been included. So where have they been for a long time? I mean, are we going to actually build an auxiliary gym without any seating, you know, just those small seats is all you need along the edge, which puts another maybe 30 feet on the side? Can you help me out? I mean, am I lost on that?
Director Buell, these gentlemen are not really involved in those kinds of issues, so the bond oversight committee making sure that money is spent, but I think the next group-
They're not oversighting, they're not oversighting any educational things at all?
No.
Nothing? You don't oversight anything, you're just making sure the money is spent and building the building? You don't, you're not taking into account educational things?
What I, what I was going to say is, the next group that's up would probably be a better group to ask those questions of than this group here, so, but, go ahead, Kevin.
It's nice to get both groups to get those questions, as a matter of fact. That way, everybody's thinking about it.
Yeah. Thank you.
If you don't want to answer it, that's fine.
Well, I can clarify or reinforce what Co-Chair Knowles said. We are not, and we don't claim to be, education experts. We, we were appointed to this committee because allegedly we're experts in the design and construction process.
Is there somebody on your committee who's an educational expert?
No, sir.
So we, we had a bond oversight committee, but no educational experts on it? Interesting. Thank you.
The bond oversight committee is made up of people who are involved in the construction industry to help us to make sure that we are meeting the goals of our, on time and on budget, so.
Yeah, and I have huge respect for everything that you're doing, and I know it's been an absolutely enormous time commitment. So when I was bringing up the CTE to you specifically, I think it's because you had expressed a concern about the timeline in particular. And again, I think that whether it's the auxiliary gym, or whether it's this, it could have an impact on the timeline if we don't square these issues away soon, so I think that's where, so thank you very much.
Exactly. Exactly. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much for being here, and thank you for your work on the committee. Please thank your, your colleagues on the committee for us, too.
Are those the mold guys, or is that the next people?
At this time, we will move to our next agenda item, the quarterly capital improvement bond update. Tonight, we'll receive that update. Superintendent Smith, would you like to go ahead and introduce this item?
So CJ Sylvester, who's our Chief Operating Officer, will provide the quarterly update.
Good evening, thank you. As usual, in your, your book, you've got the January balance scorecard, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on that presentation. But what I wanted to talk to you about tonight, and to bring to your attention and go through a few of the details on, is the summer improvement project of 2014, which we have in front of us. As the Bond Accountability Committee Chair and Committee Member indicated, the project for 2013 was successfully completed at six school sites with a $13 million- the project for 2013 was successfully completed at six school sites with a $13 million budget. The summer improvement project team worked hard last year and is powering up for summer 2014 and what may be our most ambitious summer improvement project with 12 sites and nearly a $16 million budget. We currently have three different design teams preparing construction documents for three separate invitations to bid. These construction packages will be advertised in March and April, and the bid awards will come before you in May so that we can get started as soon as school is out. There are two different ways to look at the summer improvement project 2014's project's budget. The pie chart shows that construction and contingency are 90% of project costs with design and permits at 10%. The table identified costs by type of work. So roof and roof-related seismic is 53% of the 16 million. Other seismic is 27%. Accessibility upgrades at 15% and science classrooms at 4%. We have six schools: Arlita, Boys Elliott Humboldt, Chief Joseph, Creston, Hosford, and James John that are being re-roofed and having roof-related seismic work completed this summer. This means it will no longer rain in these classrooms. And the seismic improvements being accomplished as part of the roof replacements are far more cost-effective to construct as the roof is being replaced. This means we are being wise stewards of the public's money. We have eight schools that are receiving incremental seismic improvements: Arlita, Beach, Creston, Grouse, Hosford, James John, Lane, and Woodlawn. All these improvements are contributing to safe exiting from our schools in the event of an earthquake. Beach, Hosford, and James John are further receiving accessibility improvements that include an elevator. This is a major milestone for us. We're beginning to add elevators to multi-story schools that currently have none. Other smaller accessibility improvements may seem like minor work, but they make a big difference in the lives of our students and their families. It's the difference between grandparents being able to see their grandchildren at school or a student being able to attend their local neighborhood school because the educational program is now accessible. And we are improving science classrooms at nine of these schools that have been previously mentioned as getting other work accomplished this summer. These classrooms will also have new ADA compliant sinks and eye washes in addition to new furnishings and code-compliant electrical service. Given the impact of snow days, we are currently assuming 67 calendar days to accomplish this work before school restarts in the fall. The exception to this is the elevator installations, which will be accomplished on a non-interference basis with school activities and completed no later than next spring. And by that time, we will be getting ready to bid the summer improvement project 2015 work. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about the summer improvement project scope of work summaries or anything that's in your packet this evening.
Student Representative Davidson.
So kind of going back to the Bond Accountability Committee's report, I was wondering about the student engagement. Could you explain to me what those new strategies are for involving students more?
We're currently tied into the BizConnect system, if you're familiar with that. And so that's currently heavily reliant upon school counselors being able to connect students to the BizConnect system. And so from a contractual standpoint, we're requiring all of our design and construction consultants to enroll with BizConnect. But then it's, there's a gap between that enrollment that's occurring and how the students are being able to connect through BizConnect into these opportunities. So that's a gap. It's kind of a systemic issue here at the district that we're trying to address. But we know where the issue exists. I don't know that we've fully come to understand how to correct it.
Okay. All right. And then also, they also talked about the metric for, you know, gauging that. Is that, is the metric we're using the standard metric for?
Well, the metric we're using is about our contractual requirement to make sure that our design, our architectural engineering firms, their subconsultants, and all of our contractors are actually doing the work they're required to by contract. In other words, are they attending and participating in job fairs? Are they, do they have student interns onsite, those kinds of things? Are they enrolled in BizConnect? I think what the Bond Accountability Committee is talking about and what the board has talked about in the past is, how many students are we actually impacting? So rather than the metric being one about contractual compliance, how do we, how do we turn that contractual compliance into something that's impacting the greatest number of students possible? And that's where we're talking about the systemic issue of, now that we've got all of our people enrolled in BizConnect, how do we make sure then that those opportunities are conveyed to our students so that they can maximize their opportunity to participate?
So have we also looked at changing the metric?
Yes, that's, the Bond Accountability Committee has asked us to take a look at that, and so staff's in process.
Thank you.
Can I follow up on that? Is there any sense that there's going to be increased opportunities once we move out of these summer improvement projects into the bigger high school projects? That that will be, that will be great opportunities to enroll more students?
Absolutely. And there's two different ways to look at that, just in terms of the scale of the project and the program, both in terms of design and construction. And at Roosevelt in particular, where the students are going to be remaining onsite, the opportunity for daily observation of what's occurring onsite and participation in those processes, whether it's design-related or construction-related. We have the opportunity when we've got, you know, temporary walls in place to have viewing panels through with information about what's occurring on the other side of that wall. So at Roosevelt in particular, even more so than Franklin, where the students are going to be offsite, we have a teaching and learning collaboration that could be extremely robust.
Is there any sense as well that with the existing CTE classes and offerings, that there's some way of connecting, like whether it's at Benson or other schools, like, you know, having direct connections ongoing between classrooms? So, because it seems like the thing that we were concerned about was the one-off internship. There was such a limited number of kids versus... So are you looking at ways that we can have our existing CTE classes connect directly in an ongoing way?
It is possible for us to be working with that. As the Bond Accountability Committee reported to you, the construction manager, general contractors have just recently come on board for those two projects. But for instance, we've looked at the Mount Hood Early Learning Center that was recently constructed out there in support of the Community College campus. And they used CTE classes to construct some of the furnishings for that center. And so those kinds of things are entirely possible as part of the process, both at Franklin and at Roosevelt.
Yeah, I mean, we've got a living curriculum here, and I know it's an additional-
It's an opportunity.
But still, that this is the chance to do that.
Other comments? Director Kirland?
A question. When the Budget Oversight Committee was here, it talked about the contingencies. And I was, suggested 15, they said, no, 12, and this says 18. So could you just clarify what, what it is?
Well, if you're talking about the improvement project for 2013, it varies a little bit month to month depending on the projected costs of the project. So what it starts out as and what it, what it ultimately is once contract awarded and then what it is by the time we complete are three different things. So the million-dollar savings, if you will, was just simply part of the contingency budget that was unused for 2013.
And was that budget 15% or 12% of the?
Started at 15. Started at 15.
And then, then on this one, we decided to go to 18, just as opposed to 15?
On which one?
Well, this pie chart, the improvement project for 2014. Ah, there you go.
Yeah, it's showing an 18 right there.
As opposed to 15%. Come on up, Dan.
Dan Young is the Operations Manager for the Office of School Modernization. We'll be better served having him answer some of the nuanced questions.
So all of the improvement projects start at 15% contingency? In this particular project, additional funds have been added to the project, just so as additional scope, that the project manager hasn't forecasted the same amount of expenses. So you see the contingency has gone up at this point in time, and as the project goes forward, you expect it to go back down.
So in other words, it's an accounting issue right at the moment where it's been expressed into the contingency but hasn't been shown yet as an expense in the cost of construction?
Okay, thank you. And then, and then the professional services is the management of the project?
Is-
The management of the project, what is the, what's the 10%?
Those are the architectural engineering services, so the design team.
Okay. And then what about the?
Program management?
Yeah.
Our program management is running, I think, about 5% across the entire program.
And where is that reflected in the charter? Is it just shoved in somewhere?
It actually, it is, it is not. We account for that as a separate line item under program services throughout the entire bond. And then ultimately, what happens is that the program services get accounted for in the projects once the projects are complete. So this is what we're looking at here in terms of the budget breakout is just for the program, not for any, for the project, not for any program-related expenses.
And then the program-related includes both actual staff here at PPS plus the firm that we've hired to-
Correct.
Is that the 5% that we're looking at in both? Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Director Beal?
Are these the people to ask my education question of? The, did you hear it? The one about the Roosevelt involvement and that too-small gymnasium? And there were other things I looked at and thought, this doesn't make sense from an educational standpoint. And then the teacher had suggested they hadn't been included very well?
Well, what I heard were three things from you. One was that the auxiliary gym had no seating, and that is correct. The auxiliary gyms provide opportunity for practice. They're considered a practice gym. The main gym has two full-size courts for competition. So the auxiliary gym is further used for physical education classes in addition to practice court activities. The, you also indicated, just so you know that I did catch it, that the field maintenance is not particularly high-quality, you don't think at this moment, and so I'll double-check on that. And then the publishing center, we actually have met with teachers, so, and there will be-
Once, twice, three times?
I don't know the answer to that question off the top of my head, but there will be continuing conversations through schematic design with the teachers. So this is an ongoing process as we go through the master planning process and through the schematic design process. And it's varied a little bit by the kind of environment, which teachers and the kind of environment. So in some instances, like special ed, we've actually been going, staff's been, and the design team have been going into the classrooms because that's the most comfortable place for the teachers and students to give their input. In other instances, we've brought groups of teachers together in order to talk about their specific specialties, such as science teachers and those kinds of things, and that will continue to happen.
So you had a meeting, say, with the coaches and the physical education people, and they pointed out the gym needed seating? Or would that be a no, we didn't have a meeting with those people?
I don't know for certain whether that happened or not, and I certainly don't know if they pointed that out, but it would be the same response. We know there is no seating in there. We have no capacity to add seating in there because we don't have the dollars to add additional square feet. So, and in fact, you may recall that back when we were talking about adding additional career tech space, the auxiliary gym was one space in terms of the square feet that we could have simply not provided at all in order to provide additional square feet as an offset in career technical education. So when the Bond Accountability Committee talks about the inextricable link between schedule, budget, and scope, that's what we're talking about. You can't, you can't add in one place without subtracting from another.
The, I don't really, well, maybe they want to add the seating and subtract from someplace else. Might be a good idea. But the, they haven't really met that much with teachers, it doesn't sound like. I mean, occasionally, maybe the science teacher sat down and met, but, I mean, is that, nobody knows, or?
I will, I will have to get back to you on that because there's been a certain number of meetings that have taken place. I have not personally been present in them, but we can get you that information.
Do they have an auxiliary gym over there at Franklin?
Yes.
Does that, does that have seating in it?
No.
So we're building two auxiliary gyms that are going to sit there for 50 years, and neither one has any seating in?
That's correct.
I personally think that's a huge mistake, really, not, not the way to go. Let me ask about the mold at Roosevelt. Huge mold problem at Roosevelt. What do we, I mean, have we, have we recognized that and we have a plan to work with the huge mold problem at Roosevelt?
Well, you are identifying something that I don't know if it's entirely accurate.
I don't either.
We have indoor air quality work that is done continuously here at the school district. And so mold is an indoor air quality issue.
Right, but I mean-
You've said there's a huge mold problem at Roosevelt High School. I don't know if that's accurate.
Would somebody look into that maybe and see if it is accurate?
I certainly can. We have, we have staff who do that very thing. That's their job.
Good. Could somebody send me a report on that and see what we're doing?
I could certainly have them contact you and let you know what the currently-
Evidently. Okay. What about the Berman problem? We looking into the Berman problem, how to deal with that?
Health and Safety does that as well.
Okay. Couldn't maybe somebody send me something on the Berman problem, too?
Yep.
That'd be great.
It would be the same person.
Thank you. Now, how would you get the, how would you go about changing the size of the gym at this point in time?
Unless someone gives us directions on what they want us to remove from elsewhere in the program, we're not in a position to be able to increase the size of the gym.
Unless we came up with more money someplace?
That, too. That's another way of doing it.
Okay, great. Now, would I do that in the budget? Make a motion in the budget thing to increase the size of the gym?
No, the budget is for operating funds.
Well, can a budget build a gymnasium? Can we build anything with our own budget? Do we ever build anything? I mean, do we ever, we put in things? Yeah. Do we ever do anything like that?
Is the question, do we use the general fund?
Ever. Ever for building anything, is the question?
No, it's really for maintenance and repair.
Well, I know what it's for, but do we ever build anything out of it? Have you ever thought, have we ever built anything out of the general fund?
I'm, I have no doubt at all that some years ago, that would have been possible, but given the condition of the general fund over the last decade, no.
Maybe we have at some point. Okay. Thank you.
This raises the question of, at what point are we going to let this process continue and let the professionals do their work? Because if we are continually raising additional changes, concerns, options, trade-offs, different ways we would redesign this, we're not going to get this moving forward. And our professionals, our Accountability Committee has identified a serious concern. Not quite a red flag, but I'm hearing on the border of that, and I have huge respect for their professional expertise. So I'm just, you know, wondering, what, we need to land this, and we need to allow the work to move forward. So the CTE in particular has come up over and over. I keep thinking that we've resolved it, and then it keeps coming up again. So I'm not quite sure what, what are we going to do now? I'm sort of asking in favor of us and this and-
At this point in time, the design advisory groups are all moving forward, and they'll bring a final plan to us, and we will either approve it or not, and then we'll move forward. And I'm sure that many, many of us have a number of different concerns, but just because I have a concern doesn't mean that, that we should move forward, that everything should stop to address my concern.
Well, I agree completely on that. So I guess-
There we go.
So, but, but if we're hearing that the design advisory group does have some flexibility that they may not have realized they had for whatever reason, is there still an opportunity for them? Is there an opportunity to very quickly get that addressed and have that be folded into their work going forward? So that we don't keep hearing that the Roosevelt Design Advisory-
Yeah, they're not at the end. They're not at the end yet, are they?
No, but you, you did approve the Ed Specs, which are the things that were asking everybody to utilize as their framework for how they're doing the design. Right. And the conversation you had about the CTE, 6,000 square feet, was, okay, as part of the Ed Specs, consider this a minimum, and that's how we would communicate it. You had a pretty robust discussion about exactly the conversation we're having right now in CTE and where Roosevelt's DAG had gone through a conversation about trade-offs they were willing to make in order to increase the amount of square footage that they- they were willing to make in order to increase the amount of square footage that they were allocating to CTE. And part of what we said is, let's have those, because Roosevelt was operating under a, an understanding that shooting for six thousand square feet as opposed to recognizing flexibility that Franklin had, had exercised. And we said, let's make, let's make it very clear that it's a minimum, and that they may have the conversation about trade-offs they're willing to make. Yeah.
But that's, that's a mess, that's a mess, because it has not been described as a minimum. It's been described as you have six thousand square feet at every single design team meeting I've been at. It's been described that you have six thousand square feet.
We did have a workshop on Saturday morning, as Director Regan previously identified. Three board members were there, so we had some good, robust conversation. This was a Roosevelt High School workshop, number one, for the schematic design phase. There is, will be a workshop, number two, that is also open to the general public, where there will be revised drawings that come forward as a result of the conversation that took place on Saturday. This is the way that things have been working as we move through design processes, both in the master plan and now in schematic design. I would say right now, the difference is about three thousand square feet between Franklin and Roosevelt. Franklin has a tendency to characterize general education classrooms in a more robust way in terms of their multiple uses, but really, they've got about ninety-one hundred square feet in unique space, and Roosevelt right now is looking at six thousand. Currently, Roosevelt has more general ed classrooms than Franklin has. So I mean, that's the difference in the square feet, literally, is the number of general ed classrooms versus how much is in, in career technical. Part of what came up at Saturday was, was proximity between the maker space and the STEM lab. I think that's something that we started working on with the design consultants before everyone had even left the building. So just know that that was the entire reason for Saturday workshop. The entire content was about the, the CTE, both small CTE, as Jeanne Yurkovich says, which is kind of career pathway, and the, the large CTE, or the big CTE, which is the state-approved programs. And that was the very reason for the several hours that the community spent on Saturday having the conversation at Roosevelt High School. That will influence the plans as they move forward.
Director Buell?
I want to go back to the gymnasium. So in the main, in the main gymnasium, you're going to have, at Roosevelt and Franklin, you're going to have two full-size courts, fifty by eighty-four, set next to each other, with a curtain down the middle, so you can play two competitive games at once.
Correct.
So there's a curtain down the middle, and there are two eighty-four by fifty, and there's seating on both sides.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Director Regan?
Yeah. So first of all, in all of the design team meetings I've been at, I haven't heard a single comment about mold or vermin, just so you know. And my general sense is that one of the reasons that we are rebuilding some of our schools is because they're incredibly old and leaky, and we probably have some old and vermin in most of our schools. I mean, it's just the way it is. And thank God that we have this bond in place, and we're going to start a reconstruction process. So, you know, clearly, we need to be looking at it, whether it's a particular issue right now, but that is our reality. It's the reason that we're going forward with this bond, thank God. I would say, Director Buell, in terms of the auxiliary gym, that hasn't been something that's come up in a really big way in these meetings at all. And I guess, coming from my students attending Lincoln High School, which has one gym, having two full gyms with full attendance capacity plus an auxiliary gym sounds like heaven to me. So I guess I'm not coming at it from the same perspective as you are. It seems like a monumental improvement over what many of our schools have. And I do think there is a place for a practice gym that wouldn't necessarily be where the public are. But certainly legitimate to be thinking about whether or not we need some seating in there. It's not, for me, a major concern, and I haven't heard it as a major concern, although I do know that somebody brought it up on Saturday. It's one of the first times I've heard that.
My, part of my concern is that maybe we're not looking at some things from the teacher viewpoint that we maybe should be looking at.
And that was going to be my third comment, is one of the reasons I think that we're struggling with the CTE conversation at Roosevelt is there's several of our high schools that have no current CTE offerings. And I believe that Roosevelt is one of those.
That's correct.
And Franklin has a pretty robust CTE offering, and so you're going to have teachers and staff at Franklin who really value CTE and understand what it does for kids. And at Roosevelt, you aren't necessarily going to have the same internal teaching advocates. And I guess that's where I want to make sure that our chief academic officer, our superintendent, the board is engaged in understanding what it is that we want to be providing to our students at our comprehensive schools when it comes to career technical education. I'm not sure that we're going to necessarily find the advocates internally of Roosevelt who are, who are going to be doing that as much, because it isn't currently offered there. And it's just not, it's, there maybe isn't as much awareness. But to have the inequitable offerings between our two first high schools is, is where I'm, as a school board member, really struggling. So I would, I want to make sure that the academic part of our house is in these discussions in a really substantive way and making sure that we're doing right by our kids going forward. So that's my concern.
Belial?
I just wanted to appreciate, you're calling out the difference in the actual square footage, about three thousand square feet difference, and perhaps in what it's being called, because I can remember our robust discussion about CTE here, and saying, you know, we, we're not sure that the, the amount of space allotted at Franklin was enough. And I think Director Kurler came to the next design advisory group with me, the committee, and all of a sudden, it was, you know, twenty thousand square feet. And it wasn't really that more space had been found somewhere, or more scope or budget had been, it was the adjacencies. It was how, how are we going to use this space? And what are we going to call it? How are we going to envision its use? Which was really what got us there. So I just, it sounds like some support is needed for the design advisory group to help revision that and figure that out. To me, that's really what this is about, is, is how to, how to classify it and how to, how to, how to think of that differently so that we can get that. Because I guess I just, as I hear our discussion, and I hear the, the, not a real red flag, but just a caution, I feel like our bond accountability committee is being very generous in trying to ankle to us that if we don't figure this out and stop getting in this way of, of pulling back and saying, give us this, give us more of that. By the way, just so you all know, I'd also like a band and choir room in all of our things, and right now, we have them combined. So we can all come up with lists of things that we don't, from a teacher's perspective. A band room is very different than a choir room. I can go on and on. We have a limited budget. We are moving on this project. We, we made some trade-offs, and whether or not we all understand all of them, I, I'm convinced, hearing our discussion, that all of us don't understand all of the trade-offs. But having confidence, I have heard, excuse me, I've heard of a lot of teacher meetings, offers of teaching meetings, offers of teacher meetings being not taken, saying, we're not interested for one reason or another. What I've seen, and again, I can only speak to the Franklin one, so I can't speak to Roosevelt, is that there's been a great effort to reach out. Community partners have been invited. CTE has been invited, all these different things about saying, what do you need? What does this space look like? How does this look like? And then they're taking that all in for the schematics and designs. So I, I appreciate the discussion about CTE. It sounds, again, like we need to help re, reestablish what, how we're looking at those spaces at Roosevelt, maybe more than coming up with more space. But I just wanted to say, thank you. This is exciting, and I just hope that we either take responsibility for delaying it, if we wind up delaying it, or that we realize that we're, we're picking at things that maybe aren't, aren't as important as they feel like they are right now, and so.
Coach here, Belial, if I could just add on to what you just said. I think the biggest issue that we're talking about now at Roosevelt is the area that is being set aside for maker space, which is the larger area where you can have significant machinery and tools. And right now, at Roosevelt, if you're looking at woods, metals, fabrication, manufacturing, they are setting aside two thousand square feet. That's two classroom spaces. You can't do true maker space in two thousand square feet, and everybody recognizes that. So you're right, we need to take a look at it. I would love to have our chief academic officer and others help us understand why there's so much more classroom space being set aside as opposed to making sure we have a robust maker space. That's the conversation we need to have, and we need to have it really soon, because otherwise, the decision will be made, and it will be too late. So that's the concern. Thanks.
Director Buell?
Yeah, I'd like to second what Bobby said, and I'd also like to say that there's teacher meetings and there are teacher meetings. And, and so there, and there's a huge difference on how you construct those meetings. And you construct those meetings with real input, or you construct those meetings with phony input? The huge percentage of normal teacher meetings throughout, not just Portland public schools, but period, is, are constructed generally in a phony manner, not in one that really gets people in and actually frees them up to talk, which is what I've talked about for a long time here. And I think we, you know, I don't, people say, well, yeah, I met with the teachers. Yeah, well, they went out, made a presentation, listened to questions, listened to input, but not real, serious input and discussion. That's what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Any other comments? Director Kurler?
Yeah, just, I, I appreciate the way you articulated where Roosevelt's headed, and I do think there was an issue. So I'm glad that it's been, it's been opened up, and folks are liberated to make trade-offs and just look, look at things and the adjacencies, all the things that Greg mentioned. I will just, I will just say among here that, that the issue, I think one issue which is going to make CTE pale in comparison is the notion of shared classrooms. And I just wanted to alert, I'm, I'm hearing it in a big way from, from teachers, and I just want us to be real open-eyed about that, about that issue in terms of, of budget and timelines and, and everything. It just scares me a little bit.
Okay. Who's going to be a pushback against that? That will delay the whole, the whole project?
Yes, that would be my fear.
So, thank you very much, CJ.
Thank you.
I also want to, I mean, I've been very interested in the conversation. Thank you very much to all the board members. It certainly was robust. But I also want to remind all of my colleagues that we have gone through the ed specs numerous times, and we voted on them, and we approved them. Now, we can revisit them, but it's going to take a majority of the board who wants to do that in order to do that. So I think it's important that we remember that. And as far as, and with regard to Roosevelt, I'll be very interested in seeing how that plays out in the end. I think, at least being interested in CTE, like some of my colleagues, I've been very pleased with what's happened at Franklin, and I'm looking forward to seeing how the Rose, the Roosevelt community continues to struggle with that and see where they can end up. So again, I think it's important that we leave that to the community, to let them make those decisions within the parameters that we set within the ed specs that we all voted on already. So thank you so much, everybody. Next, open enrollment. Board previously discussed this item on February third meeting. Superintendent Smith, would you like to present this item?
Um, yes. So Judy Brennan, who's the director of our enrollment and transfer services, will come on up and both do a little recap of what the discussion was previously, but also be available to answer questions.
Good evening. So in part, this is just a statutory requirement. Every year, school districts around Oregon are required by March first to designate whether they will be participating in the state's open enrollment plan, which is a certain method of having kids go across district lines. In addition to that, we just wanted to make sure that you are aware that there are a number of other legislative changes coming down for students who transfer across district lines. I believe the Senate voted on the most recent of those today, and so we will have an update for you soon. There are a number of families who live in other districts who are keenly interested in coming into Portland, who are anxiously awaiting for what that's going to be, because we will be having non-resident students apply through a separate lottery. So that's the change in action that families have been experiencing while this is going on. So your action tonight is really to decide on your open enrollment for the 2014-15 school year, and I appreciate your, your willingness to, to work with us on the next set of changes that will be coming soon.
Thank you. We'll now consider Resolution 4878, inter-district transfer procedures for the 2014-15 school year. Do I have a motion?
Some move.
Second, someone?
Second.
Director Morton moves, and Director Atkins seconds the motion to adopt Resolution 4878. Ms. Houston, is there any citizen comment?
No, there's not.
Thank you. Board discussion on this resolution. As you will all remember, we discussed this at our February third meeting, and there was also the information in the packet again this time. So any discussion on this particular item? Okay. The board will now vote on Resolution 4878. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Resolution 4878 is approved by a vote of seven to zero, with student representative Davidson voting?
Yes.
Great, thank you. The business agenda. The board will now consider the remaining issues on its business agenda, having already voted on Resolutions 4877 and 4878. Ms. Houston, are there any changes to the business agenda?
There is not.
No. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda?
Some move?
Second.
Director Belial moves, and Director Morton seconds the adoption of the business agenda. Ms. Houston, is there any public comment?
No, there isn't.
Okay. Is there any board discussion on the business agenda? Director Buell?
Thank you. If we look at 4874, where we're now hiring nineteen temporary teachers into our buildings starting, actually, the fourteenth of October and going through sometime in February, we need to figure out a better system than doing this. We get to the middle of the year, and, and maybe many of these are probably wonderful teachers, maybe. But we need to have a system where we don't get to the middle of the year, and we're pulling off of the different various substitute roles or something. A good friend of mine is principal of the year last year in middle schools, and I talked to him about his hiring at, in his David Douglas Middle School. And the last time he hired a teacher, he went through seventy pages of substitute listings. Seventy pages, and he went through every one. And he still was having difficulty getting who he really wanted. He did finally get a really good teacher, he said. But we need a different system for our hiring altogether. I think we're going to speed it up as we go out of the, out of the negotiations. It will speed up a little bit. It's not going to speed up a lot. I've talked and talked about a system that speeds it up a lot, that puts us first in the seventeen or so school districts in the entire metropolitan area. And it puts us first, and we hire a large percentage of people first, not last, which we've done for years. We've been last. We've been last for a long time, when the Stanford Children moved us from eighteenth to tied for seventeenth at one point, and we really thought it was a terrific thing. But, so when we get down to these hires, we should be hiring these people permanently from our pool that we've already put together of the best teachers in the entire metropolitan area who we hired first. I keep talking, I wish Sean was here tonight to hear this. I keep trying to get us to look at this system. Can't we look seriously about hiring first? We could do it. And when we get to this spot, instead of, now, these are the teachers who have not been hired by anybody else. And these are the best ones that we have, but they're the ones who now are sitting here in the middle of the year, unhired. We should have already had these teachers hired and in place in most of these cases. Not all, because there's not a system that's going to do it all, because you can't project it, but there is a system that you can set up. Other school districts have done it. Houston was doing it way back in the early nineteen eighties for their system. And so I'd just love to have us really recognize that our hiring system is not very good, and it needs to be better. And it's hard for me to, as a board member, to sit here and listen to the rest of the board and our administration talk about wanting to get the best teachers that we possibly can in our classrooms, and then not looking at a system that hires the best teachers that we possibly can in our classroom, particularly in the most difficult- particularly in the most difficult areas which we're trying to serve. I don't understand it, and you can go ahead and continue to do it, but it, to me, it does not make sense. Thank you.
Director Morton?
Thank you. Um, I, so Director Buell, I do have a question for you. And it is, what, here's, I guess, what I don't know, and if Sean was here, maybe he could tell us or someone else could. But at, what percentage during this time of the year do you think we would be hiring? A percentage of our overall teacher numbers, do you think would, we would be hiring, um, at this time of the year?
What do you mean, there's twenty, there's nineteen on the list?
Right.
So what percentage of that? It's a very, very small percentage.
Right.
We got tw- twenty-eight hundred teachers or twenty-nine hundred?
Right, that was my point.
Yeah, it's a very small percentage.
So I'm gonna ask Michelle Riddell, who's our assistant director of human resources, one of them, to address the questions.
So, good evening. Um, I think to speak to the question of why we've got temporary teachers being hired in October, there's typically two reasons. One would be additional hire, our teachers we're putting into the system that happened later, after, um, our initial hiring. So in October, when we had additional funding, to hire those teachers, we have to hire them as temporary. So that's why you're seeing folks being hired in October and.
Is that under the law or is that our own policy?
That is in our contract, our PPS, PAT contract.
Just a moment. Michelle, um, are those, uh, teachers out of our, some of those teachers out of our subpool that are already?
Yes. We, yeah, we both hire from our subpool. Um, that's a majority of where we do get folks. So we do hire substitutes every year. Typically, um, if we're not able to hire, but we have great teachers, but we don't have enough positions, then we'll hire them into the subpool. The other I just wanted to mention.
There's only one teacher on this list that was of October hire. Most of these are January hires. So just to say, there's one on the list.
And the other reason would be for leaves of absence. And that's really where you typically see all of the temporary teachers coming, is their backfilling for leaves that are greater than sixty days. And again, it's sort of under the contract, we have to hire them as temporary teachers.
We always have, we always have temporary teachers midway through, right?
Yes, yes.
Director Regan?
Um, I had one quick question and, um, Superintendent Smith, you don't need to answer it now if you don't have it. But Portland Community College is our new intergovernmental agreement, and it looks like a contract amount of three hundred thousand. But the description is just Jefferson, continue to provide the middle college partnership, allowing high school students an opportunity to earn high school and college credit, which is great. That's what the middle college is, but I have no idea what this three hundred thousand is for. So I'd love to get more information on that at some point. The, the description is just so generic.
Actually, I'm gonna ask Sue Anne Higgins.
Oh, thank you.
To come on up and dress up.
It's a program I absolutely love, just don't understand what this is.
The contract with Portland Community College that's before you right now is our ongoing expansion of tuition share with Portland Community College for students at Jefferson High School, um, doing dual-credit courses at PCC. So.
Thank you, that's much more helpful.
It's really exciting to see the growth there and see the, um, the growth on transcripts of students having dual-credit, um, opportunities where they have gotten their high school credits and college credits at the same time. So that's exactly what that's.
Very helpful. Thank you.
Great. Okay. Director Buell?
Yeah, the, the system that I'm kinda talking about doesn't put in just substitutes in it. It puts in permanently hired substitutes.
But that, that doesn't have anything to do with the resolution we're considering right now. This is about temporary hiring, not permanent teachers.
Right, but what I was just commenting on, that, my comments, that you actually would have permanent teachers here that you would place, that would be permanently hired, which would be the best teachers, better than what we have probably.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, the board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All, uh, all opposed, please indicate by saying no. An extension, abstention, excuse me. Business agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero with student representative Davidson voting.
Yes.
Everybody's backing away. Are we done? Where's my last page? Thank you. The next meeting of the board will be held on Monday, March third, two thousand fourteen. This meeting is now adjourned.